Patient, please.
Board, thank you for this day and thank you for all the things you've done. First, we want to pray for the comfort of the families of Charlie Charles. Pray for our Congress, office, and all the people. Also want to pray for all of our first responders and soldiers serving us overseas. Also, I want to pray for the commissioners to make the right decisions.
Amen.
I declare this to the five United States of America.
Are there any additions or deletions?
No, sir.
Can I get a motion?
Okay.
Prove of agenda? Motion to approve the agenda.
Some of them.
Person and second. Got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aha.
All opposed? We got two proclamations here. We got National 4-H Week. I'll read this proclamation and then... National 4-H Week, October 5th to October 11th, 2025. Whereas this year's National 4-H Week theme, Beyond Ready, reminds us that 4-H is preparing youth for the future while meeting them with where they are today, equipping them with the confident skills and resilience to thrive in a rapidly changing world. Whereas 4-H is America's largest youth development organization, supporting 6 million young people nationwide through hands-on learning, experiences in clubs, camps, schools, and community events. And whereas 4-H programs are delivered by the University of Florida Institute of Food and Agriculture, Cooperative Extension System, and a network of more than 100 public land-grant colleges and universities nationwide, providing youth with opportunities to learn by doing. Whereas 4-H is active in every U.S. county, including Columbia County, Florida, keeping youth, helping youth become engaged, successful, and independent citizens. Whereas Columbia County 4-H programs connect youth to their communities, teaching high skills through experiential learning and research about youth development while preparing them for work, leadership, and civic engagement. Whereas local 4-H activities from classrooms to public speaking contests to magical experiments in gardens provide youth with opportunity to explore science, agriculture, nutrition, technology, leadership, and creativity in meaningful, hands-on ways. Now therefore, we, the county commissioners, the Columbia County Board of County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim October 5th to 11th, 2025 as National 4-H Week in Columbia County, Florida, and encourage all citizens to recognize 4-H and UF Extension Columbia County for the significant impact they have made and continue to make by empowering youth with the skills, experience, and confidence they need to be leaders for life. Reclaim this second day of October. Board of County Commissioners, Robbie Hollinsworth and James M. Swisher, Clerk of Court.
Motion to approve 2025 P. that's fifteen.
You have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aha.
All opposed, motion passes. Got another proclamation.
Oh, we got a new picture. Look at her popping up. I should have seen it. I'm sorry.
I want the whole board. I think that's... Oh, you should be the only one to go take a picture.
Dennis is doing it. Now that we have somebody to do it. By the way, I like your hat. That is a cool hat.
It's right here.
Rocky, you need a bowtie like that young man here.
He can't see what I live.
I know, he's sleeping and he can't see.
Ah, we got another proclamation here. Red ribbon week. Red ribbon week. Clearing up Columbia County Board of County Commissioners, Florida, proclamation number 2025 P. fourteen. Clearing October 23rd to the 31st, 2025 as Red Ribbon Week. Whereas alcohol and drug abuse in the nation has reached epidemic stages, and whereas visible unified prevention education efforts by community members must be launched to reduce the demand for drugs. And whereas the National Family Partnership, the Florida Department of Education, and other organizations nationwide are sponsoring the National Red Ribbon Campaign, offering citizens the opportunity to demonstrate their commitment to drug-free lifestyles where it sees no use of illegal drugs, no illegal use of legal drugs. And whereas the National Red Ribbon Campaign will be celebrated in communities across the nation during Red Ribbon Week, October 23rd through the 31st. And whereas business, governments, parents, law enforcement, media, medical institutions, religious institutions, schools, senior citizens, service organizations, and youth will demonstrate their commitment to healthy, drug-free lifestyles by wearing and displaying red ribbons during this campaign. And whereas the community of Columbia County Board of County Commissioners, Florida, further commits its resources to ensure the success of the Red Ribbon Campaign. Now therefore, as Mayor of Columbia County Board of County Commissioners, anyhow, now therefore, as the Vice Chairman of Columbia County Board of County Commissioners, I do hereby reclaim October 23rd to the 31st, 2025 as Red Ribbon Week, and encourage all citizens to participate in drug prevention education activities, making a visible statement that we are strongly committed to a drug-free community. And witness thereof, I have heretofore set my hand and call the Seal of the Columbia County Board of Commissioners, Florida, to be affixed this second day of October, 2025. James M. Swisher, Clerk of Court, Robbie Hollinsworth. Have a motion?
Motion to approve 2025 P. that's fourteen.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aha.
All opposed, motion passes. Is there anybody here for Red Ribbon Week? Alrighty. Presentation board for Linda, Linda Weisman?
I'm Linda Weisman, author of a citizen... That might help, huh? I'm new at this, so y'all have to bear with me and coach me.
You can push it up some more if you don't want to...
Linda Weisman, I am the author of a citizen-generated petition for a springs protection zone on the Lower Itchituckee River, hoping for approval by FWC. I'm here today to present that to you and to answer any questions you may have. I understand FWC's already been in contact. Just want to make sure that you've got a chance to get all the information you possibly want, all the answers that I can give you. I did notice on the agenda that it's, that I'm down as Linda Weisman with Itchituckee Alliance. We need to clear that up. I am not with Itchituckee Alliance. I am purely an independent citizen. Itchituckee Alliance is a 501(c)(3) that has also written a springs protection zone petition for the Lower Itchituckee. It addresses different restrictions than the one that I wrote, and theirs has been submitted, but it is on hold probably for about a year before it is moving forward. So I just want to make sure we don't have any confusion there. There are two SPZ petitions. Only one is currently moving forward towards approval, and that's the citizen-generated one. So, Lower Itch, the Itchituckee River, I doubt that anybody here isn't familiar with it. We bring tourism in around, from around the world, people coming to see the beautiful clear waters, the fish, the turtles, the wildlife, photography. In addition to being an incredible tourism site and, of course, bringing tourism funds, money into the community, it's also a very special place from an ecological standpoint. The Itchituckee River is home to 11 different species of turtles. That's more than any other river in the country. Many of these species, about half of the species, are protected, including the Swanee Cooter, which makes up over 90% of the basking turtles that you see on the Itchituckee. It is also winter home to manatees. Something of importance here, both manatees and the cooters are herbivores. That's going to come into play as we talk about submerged aquatic vegetation, the river plants. Jumping right into it, my background, I'm a retired engineer, got no background in springs ecology. This is all new to me. Done a lot of work on this one to get up to speed. So, I'm a retired engineer. I moved to Three Rivers about five years ago. I live about a five-minute walk from the confluence with the Itchituckee. And I am a former elite swimmer, so I swim the Itchituckee every day. I've done that for the last five years. Put in at Dampier's Landing up in the state park. It's about a four-and-a-half mile stretch down to the confluence. Do it every day, winter and summer. Early on, I started picking up trash on the Lower Itchituckee, well, both sections, but started picking up trash. Lower Itchituckee was pretty much a trash pit at that point. It's now clean, so I take credit for that. I've had some help, but for the most part, that's my work, and I'm very proud of that. So, first slide we've got up is just a little bit, some of my daily cleanups. Summertime, I average 200, 300 pounds of trash a week. Wintertime, this time of year, it's much less. So what I see swimming in the river is, if I don't swim the river and get off the river by noon, especially in the summertime, it is so muddy, I can't see the bottom. That's an issue in terms of the health of the river. Our aquatic vegetation cannot grow without sunlight coming through. We've also got the issue of that stirring up the sediment on the bottom disrupts the little critters that live down there that are the foundation for the food chain and so forth. So that led me to filing the Springs Protection Zone Petition for the Lower Itchituckee. It has to be science-based. That restricted what I was able to go after on this petition. The first thing that I'm asking for is the creation of a no-wake zone on the Lower Itchituckee. It currently is not, and that is the official word from FWC. Local legend, local rumor is that it is a no-wake zone. It is not legally a no-wake zone. I've seen the game wardens issue citations and then say, "It's not a statute. We cannot..." Issue warnings and then tell the homeowners, "It's not a statute. We cannot issue a citation." No-wake zones on the Itch... Well, we'll get back to that. The other request is restricting PWCs, personal watercrafts, which are more commonly known as jet skis and sea dews. We are not talking about paddle craft like kayaks and canoes, just the jet-propelled vehicles, restricting them from operating on the Lower Itchituckee. Issue on wakes. They create shoreline erosion. We've got cypress trees falling. You lose the vegetation along the shoreline, which is a habitat for the small critters to grow and thrive. Those critters, again, foundation for the food chain. That's what your smaller fish eat. That's what your bigger fish eat. That's what your otters eat. Right on up. It also disrupts turtle basking for up to six hours, which is basically the whole day. By the time the turtles get out to bask, six hours later, you know, it's basically done. Turtle basking is important. Again, 90% of your basking turtles, over 90%, are Swanee cooters, an endangered species or an imperiled species, to be more precise. Basking is important to maintain their metabolic rate. Metabolic rate affects growth, longevity, and even more important, reproductive activity. The Itchituckee is a nursery for Swanee cooters, again, an imperiled species. So if we disrupt their reproductive rate in their nursery ground, that's significant. Of note, both manatees and all of your basking turtles are herbivores. So when we destroy the aquatic vegetation with, for instance, shoreline erosion, then we're destroying these endangered herbivores' food supply. The other ask is restricting personal watercraft from the Lower Itchituckee. Couple of issues with personal watercraft. I'll hit on the safety first. Lower Itchituckee is a tube run. We often get over 500 tubers a day going down the Itchituckee. Tubes, of course, are floating in the main current. Your vessels are also coming through the main current. It's a very shallow channel. We've got a lot of interaction between our motorized vessels and our tubers, and that's just by definition dangerous. Personal watercraft in particular can only be maneuvered when they are under throttle. So if a PWC comes around the bend and encounters a group of tubers, they can't slow down and steer around them. They have to hit throttle to steer around them, which can create a very dangerous situation. PWCs, the way that they are designed, they bring water up from underneath the hole, process it through a turbine, shoot it out the back. Shooting it out the back is what allows for the steering. Bringing the water up from underneath in a shallow stream run is basically a vacuum cleaner effect, sucking water and sediment up off the bottom. What we're talking about here are minimum 120 horsepower vessels, up to over 300 horsepower, often traveling in groups. And what you've got is a giant vacuum cleaner. What you've got's 150, 200 horsepower vacuum cleaner going down the Itchituckee, often in groups. This design of the PWC creates excessive turbidity, which is muddying of the water, more so in shallow streams because you're sucking it up from underneath. We also have wakes from the PWCs. They will create higher wakes at low speeds and high speeds because of the way they're designed. That affects your shoreline erosion as well. So I said, I mentioned that they sometime travel in groups, usually groups. It's like a motorcycle club. They go out together and ride and come up the river. Back in April this year, we had a group that was over 200 in the group, and I don't know how many came up the Itchituckee. I quit counting at 119. It was just a mess. The river looked like a mud puddle by the time they got done. This shows the PWC's just taking a break along the shoreline, but if you'll notice, as they go up into the shoreline, they're in very shallow water. It's going to disturb the bottom as well as damaging the plants right along the shoreline. One final video and then I'll open it up to questions.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Do we have the authority to make a no-wake zone?
Let me let this play and then I'll come back to you on that. Yeah. I got you on it. Okay. Back to your question. So the Itchituckee is the boundary between Swanee and Columbia Counties. There is a statute that unfortunately Itchituckee no longer falls under whereby Swanee and Columbia County Commissions together could request and petition FWC for a no-wake zone. Itchituckee no longer falls under that statute. The statute was changed in the past, I believe, like 20 years ago. I believe that was in place. There is some signage up, but it is no longer in place. So what we, the venue, the way we can do it now is through the Springs Protection Zone statute, which is administered by FWC, and they rely heavily on your endorsement, Columbia County's endorsement, as well as Swanee County's endorsement. I do have endorsements from Branford and Fort White Towns. That's not, they are not major players with FWC. Columbia County Commission and Swanee County Commission are. And if you guys get behind it, and I'm meeting with Swanee County next week, if they also get behind it, that will go a long way towards getting the no-wake zone approved.
And I think no-wake zones are more for safety. I think that's kind of why they do no-wake zones. I know Rocky and probably I grew up down there, going down, down all those rivers, especially this one. Take a boat up the other main Itchituckee.
It's both. There are significant environmental impacts from the boating, but your concern probably is, may very well be greater safety.
Yeah, I just put a rip-rap wall on my river house, completely what's happening. But I don't know what, I'd have to, I would have to hear from FWC about this because what I heard, Rocky, is we don't have the ability to do that. It's a state issue. We don't have the ability to tell them to do that, you know, to get them to do that. Second of all, I've been up the Itchituckee in my little boat, not in my big boat, my little.
Thank you.
I haven't seen what I just saw there. That's pitiful. People shouldn't run up that river, not because of the bank, because they run by mine 10 foot off the bank. So I don't have a lot of sympathy for that. But I do have a lot of sympathy for people in that little river shouldn't be running a boat. It should be slow, idle speed, I agree. But I don't know what the law, as far as what we can do about that. But I do agree that running a boat, anything above idle speed on that river is unsafe, you know, and I...
I appreciate that.
When you say the jet skis, I don't, I don't know if they're any worse than a prop, you know? The prop is about...
It's a different mechanism.
Yeah, yeah. But a prop is a foot under the water, the, you know, I don't know which one's worse, but, but it's hard for me to know what the impact is exactly because there's no, like, study showing me that manatees are dying or somebody. So I, I'm real, I'm real, what would I say? Because I have a place on the river for 20 years, and people run up and down in front of my bank and there's turtles basking.
Are you on the Santa Fe?
There's all the same things you say.
I'm on the Santa Fe and I did it on the Santa Fe.
I got boats coming from the Santa Fe who want to come on my river and run up and down. So you're going to get that from the Swanee people. They're like, wait a second, why don't we have, you know what I mean?
So there's a big difference, though. The Itchituckee, I live on the Santa Fe. I would love to cut down on some of the boat traffic out there. The Itchituckee is a very, very fragile ecosystem. It is a spring run. It is shallow, it's narrow. So it's a different, you know, and I live on the Santa Fe. I would love to stop that crap.
Is it three miles that's protected that they actually want to do?
The state park is three miles and then we're three miles.
And also you have private homes built on it. That, the people that are, I'm just giving y'all both sides of the story. The people that own homes on it were set to tanks. You know, they're, a lot of them are the ones wanting this done, and you're going, okay, so you got the people that just want to ride in their boat up, up Itchituckee to show their kids Itchituckee.
But we're not stopping that. All we're saying is you can't do it on plane.
On plane. And I don't, I agree with that. I just don't know if we have the power to do that.
So what you do have the power to do, and, and no, my understanding of it is you do not have the power to create a no-wake zone, even with Swanee County along with you. What you do have the power to do is to let FWC know that you are in favor of a no-wake zone as asked, as requested in the Springs Protection Zone petition, and then they can pass the no-wake zone. And that's what I'm asking for today, is that support.
And what you have to understand too is now that, then we'll have the Santa Fe that want a no-wake zone.
But that's not, that's not a spring run. That's not a spring run, and the statute is only for spring runs. I wish, I would love to go after the Santa Fe. There is no avenue that I can find to help the Santa Fe.
I don't know on the Santa Fe anymore because I think it's...
It's crazy.
Trevor, I, I tend to agree with you. I have no problem.
And we're not asking for that in this petition.
And I do, I do think I have, I'd have to get more research in jet ski stuff. Don't know that I would support in a jet ski up in the U.S. Yeah, and I will agree. Jet skis aggravate me too. I see the 200 come by my house all the time, do circles right in your yard. It's right there, and they're tearing every, you know, but...
And you can absolutely...
That's, the waters are the people, so you have to let them do it. But I'm with him on that too. If you're going to let a boat, I can't stop a jet ski and I can't stop a guy.
I mean, I fully understand the notion.
And there's no harm...
And I support that a hundred... I would...
There's no harm in going...
I think most people would honor that anyway, but you know, on that river.
If we tell FWC that we're agree with a no-wake zone and anybody would, even if, even if we didn't like it, we're still going to approve it because it's too small a river to run on. Just it. You got to be off in the head to run on the Itchituckee like that. So I believe that that would be a good thing. Any boat or any watercraft, I can't say no to because it is, those springs are maintained and taken care of by the people. People pay the taxes and the people ride in the boat, so I...
And I'll take that. I'll take that.
And I'll, I'll leave you alone. I would support a speed limit on the boat, but talking to FWC, they have no way to...
Have no way to...
Yeah, there's no, there's no statutory avenue.
You know, you can set one, but one, we can't do anything.
Yeah, and of course, I disagree on the jet skis because of the environmental damage they do. I'm all for shared recreation, but shared recreation in a responsible manner so you don't damage the spring run. And I want to see, I would like to see the jet ski stay out on the Santa Fe and the Swanee where they're not going to do the damage to such a fragile spring run, but that's, you know, that's me.
But if you got a no-wake zone, that jet ski is idling up there. It's going to be idling.
But they throw a large wake at idle. They're... Their smallest wake is when they're up on plain.
I kind of disagree with that.
No, actually, if you go to the jet ski literature, it's, it's supported.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's the fact, because of the way that they're designed. At idle speed and at high speed, they throw the largest wake. When they're up on plain is their smallest wake. Obviously, we don't want them up on plain going up the Itchitucknee.
Any boat throws, a lot of boats throw, yeah, even boats.
Yeah, depends on the whole design.
I'm like Rocky, I couldn't limit any watercraft, and I've seen thirty-foot boats up in there when it's real deep.
Yeah.
But those guys are more careful than the little boats because they were scared of hitting the motor. I mean, I've been up in there with.
Yeah, they got some money in that boat.
I've been up there in my old ship years ago, but it was when it was real deep.
Yeah.
You're so scared of hitting something, you're barely moving.
A normal water level.
Yeah, yeah. I was going to say, even for jet skis right now, would be tough.
Jet skis can run in two feet of water, and by jove, they do.
Yeah, because they don't have a prop, I guess. But boats, I bet you're not getting a lot of boats.
No, we're not getting a lot of boats. Well, the boats we are getting are the little fishing boats, the John boats and the canoes, and that's fine. That's fine, and they're pretty much idling because they got the same problem with running a prop.
I'm like Robbie, I've been on the Santa Fe, the Itchitucknee, all my life. And this time of year like this, you just don't go, you don't go up the Itchitucknee. Everybody knows that with their boats.
Not unless you got a canoe.
You're going to knock a hole in it or tear your foot up.
Yeah, and it's been, it's been a really good summer, honestly, for the SAV to start to recover. We lost a lot with the flooding. Last fall, the Itchitucknee was dead because of flooding and other factors, but the flooding killed it off finally. We didn't have a single manatee over winter in the lower Itchitucknee last year because the river was dead. River levels dropped around Memorial Day. We had a pretty good Memorial Day turnout at the confluence, and then rivers dropped shortly after that, and we haven't had the boating activity on the river, and you can really see a difference in the SAV. It's really come back nicely, and, you know, we're still low. So hopefully, we'll have low, low water all winter, and we'll get some SAV back.
I love it.
I agree. I agree with the board here. I haven't been on this, on that Itchitucknee River in twenty years.
Come on, I'll take you.
And the last time I was there, you couldn't get up and down it because of the flops and the people on the river. So this is a safety issue you're talking about.
Yes, sir.
It is really what you're talking about a wake, you know, a wake zone, because I don't see how in the heck anybody drives a jet ski with that thing that fast, you know. I agree with a no-wake zone.
Yeah, if, if we can, you know, even if you need to bifurcate it and not address the jet ski portion of it, but get behind the no-wake zone, I would appreciate it.
So when you're asking us to.
Yes, sir, if you would, if you would please, if you would please. They would like to hear from you.
I don't have a problem doing it, and I'm going to just be honest with you, it doesn't have anything to do with the houses along there or anything. It has to do with safety for the tubers and kids, and should be no-wake.
Thank you.
But, but for me to say anything about what's going to happen, and I've seen this, and I've already heard it, well, then they shouldn't have built houses on that spring run, you know, and those were built seventy years, you know what I mean? So you're going to get that argument.
There's an argument on both sides.
They're dumping sewage. They're dumping sewage. So we want to ride our boat up there, but they're, you know what I mean? You're going to get.
Every Three Rivers resident that does not live on the Itchitucknee thinks that all those houses should be destroyed on the Itchitucknee.
Exactly, exactly. Everybody that doesn't have a house on the river thinks all the houses on the river should be gone.
Yep, that's it. Okay. Anybody else have questions for me?
Well, the statute requires for the commission to operate in concert with the affected municipalities and local governments. So she's absolutely right. We do have feedback. We, David and I actually attended a multi-agency conference call a few weeks back. Evidently, from the state's perspective, they're saying that they're supposed to be, and you may know, there's been some changes to rules this past year. There are more evidence-based than they used to be, higher evidentiary threshold. I don't think there's any problem with us expressing our support. I think during the, that we believe our commission is fairly supportive of restrictions. They've apparently got a lot of technical stuff they do on there. And so there's a lot that goes into this, more than just opinions of what we do, but if all you're saying is you would like us to continue to be supportive, we'll continue conference calls. I can certainly prepare a short supportive letter, give me your details about your application.
David, I believe, has the actual petition.
I think it's in the agenda. So if that's something the chair is interested in doing, or the board is, I'll get that forward. Just, you know, I understand exactly what she's, the statute does actually require coordination with the local government. Obviously, she's right, our, our opinion does matter. I think the concern that we heard on the conference call the other day was, I guess, they've more weighted the evidence side than the policy argument. They're looking for empirical data.
That, that's going to be, that's going to be the hurdle you might have to get over, show that those boats are hurting.
I, I think I have met that standard.
Because I know the turtles on the Swanee and the Santa Fe have a heck of a time. They tough turtles compared to the ones that, you know what I mean? They're getting hammered all the time.
Over twenty-five percent of the, of the turtles, the basking turtles on the Santa Fe have prop injuries to their, to their shells. So yes, they are getting hammered. And again, we're talking imperiled species for the vast majority of them, so yes. But yeah, that was part of my job in writing this petition, and it was a challenge to go back to, especially since I don't have a background in this, I'm an engineer, but to go back to the science and develop the science-based argument. FWC, under this statute, doesn't care about safety, but that's not the standard that had to be met.
I, I kind of disagree with that because they make no-wake zones near the confluence of the Santa Fe and the Swanee, and that has to be a safety issue. I would think that's why they're doing that, and they do do it at some boat ramps.
Yeah, they do have no-wake zone.
Yeah, they do it on boat ramp areas, they do no-wake zones. So I feel like they're main, and I believe in my heart, I don't know, I'm not, I'm not going to say this is truth, but I feel like safety is their number one concern. I feel like all the others.
I'm not saying they're not concerned about it. What we're going after here, the venue to get a no-wake zone is the Springs Protection Zone statute.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yes, and that does not care about anything but environmental concerns.
So we'll, we'll, we'll give them old hurrah that we want, we feel like, because of, you know, for us, it's safety, but for you, it's the other. So one accomplishes the other, you know what I mean?
Yeah, we're all, we're on the same page, on the same page.
Are you, are you, you got any more? I got a couple.
I'm done, but if you've got questions for me, I'll, I'll stay. Otherwise, I'll go sit down and get out of your way.
I'm good. I got two people want to talk about it.
Yes, sir. Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Is Ms. Gilchrist, Gilda? Is that Gilchrist?
Gilchrist, yeah.
Gilchrist? Oh, thank God, like Gilchrist County, you name it, you got some whole family here, don't you?
Good morning. So I've heard your discussions, and one of the things that I will be speaking to is the difference between tonic water river, such as the Santa Fe and the Swanee, and a clear water spring run, which is what the legisla, what we're after protecting. So I'm Hilda Gilchrist. I'm an officer of the Board of Three Rivers Estates and home, which is home to over fifteen hundred parcels, many of which are not on the river, but they all enjoy the river and want to protect it. Tripo is fully supportive of this citizen-led SPZ petition. Also, I was contacted by John Jopling, the president of the Itchitucknee Alliance, to ask me to represent the alliance, since he cannot be present today, to come before you in full support of Ms. Weisman's petition. I won't go over what the petition covers. You more than understand that now. Please allow me to quote from "The Guide to the Natural Communities of Florida," which was prepared by the Florida Natural Areas Inventory and the Department of Natural Resources. And it defines all the different ecological zones and qualities in Florida. So for a spring run, quote unquote, "They are the watercourses which derive most, if not all, of their water from an artesian opening in the underground aquifer. Waters issuing from the aquifer are generally clear, slightly alkaline, and cold. These conditions saturate the water with important minerals, allow the light to penetrate that is huge, deeply, and reduce the limiting effects of environmental fluctuations, all of which are conducive for plant growth." Thus, and here's a sentence I love, "Spring run streams are among the most productive aquatic habitats." And that's why our governor, Governor DeSantis, decided four years ago to protect springs and spring runs through the development of SPZs, Spring Protection Zones. The document, I'll end the quote there. The, the document goes on to include the name of over eight species of submerged aquatic vegetation, salv, many of which are no longer found in the lower Itchitucknee due to the turbidity, the brownouts that occur every time the jet skis come through. I live on the river. I'm one of those fortunate ones that fell in love with it when I was a student at UF. I promised myself that I would live here. My husband and I found a piece of property in thirteen, and we've been there since, and I can tell you, it's been degraded. The protections, the, the healthy stands of salv in turn provide for the health of over sixteen fish and invertebrates, named in that document. Many of those have been greatly diminished due to habitat loss. The protections provided by the no-wake zone that we are requesting are limited, but they will assist in the improved health of the lower Itchitucknee. What we want is that the SPC be supported by the Fish and Wildlife Commission, and your endorsement is very important and will further our goal.
Thank you, Ms. Thank you.
Hold on down, Mr. Blain. Now, you realize we've already said that we would, we're for having the, okay.
I appreciate the time today. My name is Rick Lanis. I live in Columbia County in District Two. I live on the Santa Fe, which is not a spring-fed river. It does have many springs boring into it, which we treasure. The Itchitucknee is different. The Itchitucknee is one of God's great gifts to Florida and to our nation. It is such a unique river. I go down it, and it's just amazing. The Upper Santa Fe from twenty-seven, which is the park, is protected, no motorcraft, mostly paddlers, swimmers, and to look at the submerged aquatic vegetation, fish, the crustaceans, the alligators, the turtles, it is just, it's like heaven to me. When you get to twenty-seven and go to the, where the itch flows into the Swanee, I mean, I'm sorry, the Santa Fe at the confluence, the river changes dramatically. And it mostly changes because of us, because of people. Recreation, done correctly on such a important vital river system, a spring run like that, should be limited to a point where you don't do dramatic damage, in my opinion. Spring protection zone would allow that to happen to some degree. You know, if I was king for a day, I would say no more motors on the lower itch, but that's probably not going to happen. But to have a no-wake zone and to keep the huge vacuum cleaners off that river, off that, off that spring run, would really give the river a chance to be like the Upper Itchitucknee, which is just magical. So I'm here today. I am the president of our Santa Fe River. It's 501(c)(3) with the primary objective to help advocate for the preservation of the Santa Fe, springs around the Santa Fe, and the watershed, our watershed, and the aquifer. So this is very much in line with OSFIR's mission, and I just support Linda, and thank you for writing a letter to Florida Wildlife Commission in support of the SPZ. Thank you.
Okay. Can I get a motion for a pool consent agenda?
Abut.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Can I get adoption?
Abut.
Motion to adopt consent agenda. Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
We had the ten AM workshop. You can adjourn the regular session workshop. I think all the folks, set to start at ten AM.
Oh, it was set to start, okay. So we're going to adjourn at the, at the end of the, adopt of the consent agenda. So we'll adjourn this meeting and start the. We'll be back, won't be long.